Randy said it starts a football game on the big field at six o'clock.
Yeah.
So I want to go, so let's. He friends just broke his elbow. But he dug for it and fell. Funny, it's dislocated, broken in two spots. So it's tough. Why, this isn't broken, this is displaced is what they call it. So another week getting started. It is bad. I think that's too slow.
We go back, she'll be like.
Oh, it's like this. Back. So.
Do you want to hear me now?
No, no. I, I take it off now. Time to just take it off in the shower. So I've been starting to think about it for minutes.
Does it hurt?
Yes. There's this guy. They don't listen to you. Where did you got it? They occasionally sound. Oh, we would say that's.
So he's a.
Right up my alley. Yeah, he's a.
Just take it in.
Well, you know, I was going to say.
Things to do. It's all Thursday. My sister makes it all herself. It was really nice. We're in Florida as well. It's before the period in the starts. Yeah. I like to go to Pensacola a little bit. It's like a thousand dollars more or something. Okay, we'll go, we'll go to Pensacola. All I need is the beach. I'll be in the same. I really like Pensacola a little bit. We went there last year.
It's very clean.
Yes.
It's a moose.
Yeah, it was. That was fantastic. Yeah, I've got a video of him walking there. What's it saying? If it's not. It's awesome. If it's. Yeah, what's going on? Hey, Randy, can you pop that? Please. I didn't do that.
Time is now six o'clock. This meeting is called a order. Go call Sandy Burks present, Bob Reinhardt.
Here.
Scott Galong.
Here.
Stacy Elpers.
Here.
Sandra Hicks.
Here.
Listen for the president's.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to the republic where which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This meeting is being recorded, so anyone who speaks is giving permission to be recorded and posted to our YouTube channel and our town website. Virtual participation is not monitored, so you can virtually watch the meeting, but if you need to talk or want to speak, it must be in person. Next thing on the agenda is our minutes from our August the 27th public meeting, our August the 27th budget hearing and our September the 9th executive session. If there are not any additions or corrections to any of those, I'm looking for a motion to approve.
I make a, go ahead, Bob.
I make a motion to approve.
I second it. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, claims in September docket from August the 22nd through September the 19th, 2025 in the amount of $341,974.80. We have any questions about those?
No questions.
I make a motion to approve.
I second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, next is the Thunderport. The Thunderport balances the amount of $6,087,248.05. Any questions about these?
No questions. I make a motion to approve the Thunderport.
I second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, sewer adjustments, we didn't have any this month. Sewer project update, we have pay application number 10, the amount of $118,907.09. Randy, are we satisfied with the work that's been done?
Yes, we're coming back with some more things to do the final project.
Should we hold this payment until that's complete? No?
There'll be a final.
Oh, there'll be one more. Okay. All right. I make a motion, then we pay this.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, do we have an update on the water project?
We have a meeting tomorrow.
Okay.
With the engineering firm.
All right, next is citizens' concerns. Before we begin, I would like to remind everyone, we have a five-minute time limit, so we will cut you off if you get to five minutes. Okay? First one's community front.
I don't have anything, but I think John does. We're good, I'm saying, for the hunt.
I don't have anything.
You don't have anything too?
No.
Okay, we're good.
Okay, great. And just to, for the record, it's October 24th and 25th?
Yes.
Correct.
And your zombie run is on the 25th?
25th at 9:00 a.m.
Okay, awesome. We have everything in place for them, for those events?
Yes.
Okay, awesome, great. Okay, the next is Chuck Lewis.
Good evening, everyone. I'm County Commissioner Chuck Lewis. I had condensed my talk down to anticipation of going to the races at Tri-State, since it's canceled, you're getting the whole 42-minute version. So I'm back here to discuss the project on the two's lateral of Pigeon Creek on the west side of the sewer, uh, sewage disposal plant. We are planning on cleaning the ditch out, removing trees, dressing up the banks, opening the flow channel approximately 3,000 feet, starting at the bridge on Coal Mine Road headed west and east towards railroad. We'd like to make it all the way to the railroad, but until we get final bids, we don't know exactly how far we're going to go. I brought you copies of the Indiana Code showing the right of entry for us to do maintenance on this section of a regulator drain. And I also brought you a copy of an estimate we received from Tri-State Fence to take down the existing fence on the sewer plant property on the west side and then reinstall it when it's done. I am here to make a good faith offer that the county is willing to split the cost of the fence 50/50 with the Towneport branch. We really don't feel we have to because of the right of entry, Indiana Code and all that, but we are willing to do that to make this project move forward. Obviously, we're doing it to help Coal Mine Road with the flooding problems and the schools open and all. We don't think it's going to cure it, but it's step one on some other projects we have upcoming on that group, they'll believe you. We're getting ready. The surveyor's writing specifications. They will go to bid here in the next couple of weeks when a contractor is selected. We will meet with all the property owners, including the town. We've already contacted some of the other adjacent ones. We will do our due diligence to work with everyone to try not to disrupt anything that the farmers are doing and/or the city's doing at the sewer plant. That's what I'm at.
So, go ahead.
If you had a question, go ahead. I was, I just had a comment that I appreciate the county's good faith offers with the cost of this.
Well, we realize that budgets are tight everywhere and it's something we're willing to. We know it's not something you want to do, but we have to be able to maintain the ditch. I mean, that's just what it is.
And that's, and that's fair. It's a great solution. We take down the fence, do the cleaning, put the fence back up, split the cost. I can't think of a better way to solve it.
How long will things be done? That's my question.
I'm sorry.
How long will the fence be down?
I cannot answer that.
Do we have?
We can't start on the project till mid-October because of bats roosting. You have to wait till they go into hibernate. That's a federal law. And then obviously, it depends on the contractors, whether, you know, I, I really can't give you an accurate estimate on that, I'm sorry.
So do you all have a plan to secure the fence while the fence is down?
No.
You understand our concern with that, right?
We could always string up some of that temporary stuff.
Something, we'll need to do something. We'll have to have a plan before you begin work. So before you begin.
The thing you would have to do would be something at each end. You know, you wouldn't have to run the whole six hundred foot. Would be my thoughts, but fences are like locked doors that keep all those people off us. That's about it.
Right. I mean, if we could make the timing such that it was down for, you know, went down right before the work started, kind of a thing. You always have that concern that, well, we take the fence down and then the contractor doesn't show up.
We will do everything we can to see to it. We will emphasize to the contractor that when they start and that fence comes down, we want that portion finished as quickly as possible. And then they can finish the rest of it south whenever, because, you know, it's just a few.
Right.
And the same way with the west side of the ditch. We've already talked to the landowners. The crops are out. They're not putting any winter weed or anything in there, so, you know, we're not going to bother them till spring planting time.
So this estimate says it's $18,000 and it says that it might be adjusted if we reuse the posts?
So it could possibly be slightly less. So in other words, the county's offer is not to exceed $9,032.
And we may get off less than that.
Correct.
Do we have money in the budget for that?
Stacy, can we make $9,000 happen if we have to for this?
Sounds like they're going to have to.
So is the fence going to be left in the same exact location?
I'd say that would be negotiable, Randy, if there's a wiggle room depending on the bank.
How much are you going to widen?
Not anymore than we have to without getting this far down. We try, obviously, when they do a ditch project, they like to get a slope on the bank. You don't want a straight up and down bank because you have erosion and sloughing off and everything. Obviously, we're not going to be able to get a lot, especially like where your dry beds are and things like that. We understand that. You know, we'll know more after we have the contractors look at it and get a bid.
The big concern is they have to have a structure. And you know, it's going to stick out here pretty good.
And, you know, we, we may have to go around it or something.
So is the fence going to be re, put back the way it was designed? Because I'm sure it was all designed by engineers. It's, even the line posts, they've got like a two-foot wall of concrete.
According to the bid here, which you can get a copy from them, Tri-State Fence will put it back up and everything and warranty it for five years. So they'll reuse as much as they can. They'll reuse the fencing and all, but then, and as many posts as they can get out intact. Obviously, there'll be some four up on. And if you folks want to get a bid from another fencing company that's less, our offer will stand, we'll still go half with you.
Well, I don't think it's going to be less. I'm not saying.
I think this. I'm very familiar with this particular vendor who is favorable to the Towneport branch.
He's a resident, or was.
Yeah. The owner was born and raised here, so.
Spoke to him today as a matter of fact.
So when do you anticipate having a meeting? In October? Once you're ready to begin, you're going to meet with the town again?
We'll put bids out.
Okay.
When the bids come in, we select a contractor. We will have a pre-construction meeting with all of the landowners involved and contractors and everyone before we turn the first shovel to them. And if we need to, I mean, I will be closely monitoring the project. The county surveyor obviously will. Any of you, Randy, anyone has any questions or concern during the project, you can reach out, we'll have a meeting, have a chat, drive down there or whatever we got to do to take care of it.
Okay, so what do you need from us today? Agreement?
Basically, I guess I just need you guys to say you agree with the county's offer to do for.
I make a motion to agree with the county's offer.
I'll accept.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Pat Kramer?
My name is Pat Kramer. I live at 505 East Street. I want to first apologize to the town employees that I got obscene, I said very obscene words to them on the September the 3rd. After they put a patch in the corner of my driveway, or my lot. I got two pictures here, the first time they tried patching. We've been ongoing. First, thank you, sir. We've been ongoing pre-COVID to get my sidewalk replaced where the water line was specially repaired in my yard. And I've been after the town employees several times to get it fixed. And I keep getting run around saying that they're going to fix it and none of it's been done. And this has been ongoing over five years.
So is this a water problem or sewer problem?
Water problem. They fixed the water main. This water main's been repaired three times since I bought the property in 89. The second issue is Willard Street. This is part of the issue with this curb being rounded and people running through my yard. That patch added two foot to the corner. Willard Street, according to my right-of-way, is only a 10-foot east bend and in my driveway is 15-foot wide. And it tapers from the corner of Straight Street to my driveway and all the way down my property line. If you refer to plat book number one, Towneport branch, page 188, it states the side of the street and right-of-way.
I'm trying to bring it up because we talked to the courthouse today, Randy and I did. So let me get to where I need to be.
There is a curb on the east side of the street and one block north of it on Willard. Curbs on both sides. You go one block south, where I live, on Willard, and the street there goes back to 21-foot. But through my property, it runs at 25 feet.
Okay, whenever, I'm going to speak for a minute, if that's okay. I spoke with Candy Corin, Randy and I did today, and she told us there at that right-of-way is 60-foot and.
60-foot would be all the way through my lot.
Well, I have it up here right now. You can look at it. This is the plat map and this is your property right here on this number 10 and this number 13. So it even shows at the top here that it is, is it 60-foot right here? It's 60-foot right-of-way all the way down. So she said that we are well within our mains of the street.
Why is there a curb one block north at 21-foot?
It's still within the 60-foot right-of-way is what she said. So.
So you're.
This is, this is the subdivision and lot lines. This is how she had me do today. So you can see where these purple lines are here. And if you were to take this, and I'm not real good at it because I have a good hand, but. Here is the measurement. And if you go from, I'm trying to get as close to this spot as possible and you take it to this next lot line. I don't have much control here.
The right-of-ways are really big.
So let me ask you this question. Why was it widened on my side of the street and not the other side?
Well, I don't think that it was widened. I think that's just the way the, whenever they were doing the paving. I just think that's just the way it happened. And in your driveway, they were giving you an apron to make the transition smooth into your driveway. They weren't trying to take your driveway away. They were making an apron, so it's a smooth transition from the road into your driveway.
But I still ask why it wasn't the same amount of footage taken on the opposite side of the street?
I mean, I don't understand what, I mean, it looks.
The right-of-way is 30-foot on each side.
He's lot 10 and 13.
So where's this, where's this picture? Show me on this side where this picture is.
Where, you wanted to get widened with the, is it in this corner?
I took pictures this morning.
Is that where it is right there?
Yes.
There's.
Right here is a picture with take measure 21-foot, same as the block north and the same as the block south. And the take measure 21-foot, it aligns up across my driveway.
This is where they rounded it off, right?
Yes, but then they tapered from that corner five feet back to my driveway. Now I approach and show you.
Your driveway right here?
No.
This driveway?
Yes. This corner, you can see in that picture, it's been rounded where everybody keeps arriving through it. So I asked Randy to repair it and put my sidewalks back that were taken out to repair a water line five years ago. And they haven't repaired it yet. But previously, they, I was billed for replacement on that. I paid half to have that sidewalk put back in.
I remember.
So this has been repaired three times. But see how this tapers here and comes back to my driveway? First five foot wider on this side than there is on this side. You can see in the picture, it's obvious.
But where the purple dotted line is, we're still within the right-of-way.
But, but why I ask is it widened on my side and not appear on this lot or this block? And that's just going to widen down here.
Because it was trying to go into your driveway as a transition.
But it's widened all the way down to the end of my lots.
I don't know that we can make the argument about consistency, right? I don't know that we can say that it's always going to be the same on each side of the street. I, I see what you're saying.
Because they got a curb over there, you're not going to take anything else. So you're telling me they can widen this all the way all up?
They can widen all the way up. Because that's the right of way. And it's unfortunate, the right-of-ways are huge. They have to be telephoned both and telecommunications.
And then there was another question I wanted to ask. I wanted to put an O in this corner to keep their bike running through that corner. Well, you've done it in 20 other different locations in town. I bet it do that recently.
We don't do that anymore because it's a liability.
They, they used to do that. Why didn't we put the sidewalk back?
And this is what started.
That started.
Yes, that's what started, so issue. And I've been dealing with this for over five years.
How long has the sidewalk been?
It's been over five, it was pre-COVID. I asked for a repair date on it.
If you're, if we're done with the map.
So that microphone takes it off, yeah.
So I think.
Thank you for pointing that out.
I think you understand what, what your request is.
I want my sidewalk put back here. It's been over five years.
Okay, so we can address the sidewalk. Was there anything else that you wanted to address?
No, other than the street and right-of-way.
So, but you understand the street, we have all the way to the purple?
Okay, is, the next time, is it still going to get widened on my side? Because they're going to come through.
So we could go even all the way on your side to the purple line, even if we didn't touch the other side. We're within our rights to do that.
So what, what's happened in town and a lot of places is the roads keep getting added on, the curbs go away.
Right, and that's what's. On the opposite side, so they can, they can do that side.
I can tell you this, we're working on a paving grant and within that paving grant, we're asking if we can put some curbs back in.
And that's one issue.
It's happened all over town.
When the water line was broke, they took that curb out.
We're working on it.
And like I said, I've been battling this since Johnny Johnson doesn't work for the town with that.
So you don't want us to remove the, like you told me yesterday, you don't want us to remove the asphalt from your driveway anymore?
Well, I'd like to have it removed, the five-foot extra, you know. You know, narrow it back to 21-foot like everybody else's street. Because at the end of the corner on lot 13, it's still two foot wider there than 21-foot. You can stand at the end of the street on each end and see how much it dips over on my side.
I think that we can fix the sidewalk. I think we need to fix the sidewalk. I think that your, your argument about the 21-foot is not something we're going to address right now because we're still within our rights. So I understand where you're saying 21-foot, but we have all the way to that purple line. We could, we could put whatever we want in that area, to be totally honest with you.
Well, the thing that issue is, like I said, there's a curb on the other side, so you're not going to widen the street to that side. So you're continuously going to take property away from me.
It's not actually true. If we decided for some reason we wanted to widen the street, we could go all the way to purple line on the other side of your neighbor cross street too. If we wanted to do that.
But change of heart, you're not because there's a curb.
You're right, you're right. But I don't think that here the issue is really that we're trying to widen the street. I think we were trying to make it better for you was the intent. Right?
But it's all the way down the street, it's extra wide.
It does, it needs to be ADA compliant, it needs to go in there. That's your right.
If it was replaced out, when that sidewalk was taken out, if it was replaced, you wouldn't have to deal with the, pay whatever.
Now we do.
We have to because we touched it. We have to by law, fix it back to ADA complaint and we'll do that.
Yeah, because one time during this whole project, when it first started, when Johnny Johnson ripped that all out of the back hole, there was a lot, a drain in that corner that ran underneath the property all the way down to where Mr. Parker lives. And when they ran the fiber optic line through there this last summer, they got inside that and run it all the way through there. So they explained to me that there was, because they thought it was my sewer. And they were actually in that drain and that drain, because they're replaced either. And that's why water stains in that corner.
And we can't put a camera down that drain like he's saying? Is there a fiber optic line running through it?
There's no opening.
No.
Yeah, they took it all out, they closed it all off.
Tell me about that.
The maps we have in 16, it shows an open ditch. And if you go down to the nearest opening down there on Lincoln Street, there's not a tower coming in from the east. Whether it's been blocked off, I don't know what's happened, how many years ago it was being. But if they got in that tower and used it as a change, they had to come out somewhere. And that's the only opening there because we've done. It used to be in the property just east of me, there was a grate in the, in the ditch that connected to that. And when that water line broke, they turped, turped all that out because it was a trench five foot deep and five foot wide. And all that drains all the way to the street near that were taken out. And that was poor Randy. Fred, I don't even know if you were at Shorty Kramer was.
Yeah, I was there when he was here. But I don't remember ripping out any drains.
But it was.
I really doubt. We worked on the water line, we didn't even do that that day. We filled up the sidewalk with water line, ran underneath the sidewalk. We repaired it, we can put your sidewalk back. And I don't know about the drains. And the last time I remember. And the last time I remember digging there, we did, we did it all back up.
Okay, so is this like this right now?
No. I threw it in and Randy removed three or seven.
Okay, so right here, we need to replace that sidewalk.
Yes, it is on the list.
Okay.
It was one of the first ones to go on this year's concrete replacement.
Okay. So beyond that. What's your request?
To just repair my sidewalk.
Okay.
We'll get it done.
All right.
It'll, it's at the top of the list. When do we tackle that list? Will that not start from next year?
No.
No, I can do this year.
Okay.
We just got our ADA.
Yeah.
It's in here.
It is.
It's on our.
She sent it to.
Okay. All right, it'll be on top of the list.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, Louis Schudy?
But that's, that was in our Dropbox this week.
Okay, we have a bill for completion of work at nine oh-nine Mohawk Drive in Ford Ranch. It says I needed dirt delivered and leveled up after drain repairs were done adjacent to my home residence. This was a three-year ongoing process and I hired Greg Weber to do the job prior to sewing grass this fall. Kindly reimburse Louis Schudy four hundred seventy-five dollars since I have already paid the invoice for services during here. What's going on with this?
We went out there and done some stormwater work. We fixed the opening, the inlet box. We poured concrete all around. We had three or four subcoats downstream from that to the exit side. Where the tile had been separated by tree roots. So we dug it all out, patched it back, put fiber on it, rotted it. Piled it up so it would settle, but we'd been dry for like two and a half months. There ain't no settle without a little bit of moisture pushing it back. But she does, no saying she wanted fixed by September. Twenty-eighth August, took a tractor out there. She already hadn't worked that. So we were on our dead line to meet it. And now she's got subcoats, well, or not subcoats, it's sedimented because it's got moisture. It's.
But this was work that we would have done.
We were going to do that.
Yes, we were going to do that. And we were there on site the twenty-eighth before September.
In my opinion, she needs to come talk to us about that.
No, she didn't.
Do you all agree?
Meeting.
Yeah.
Need to.
Let me give that back to you. Okay. Um, were there any other systems concerns? Okay, moving on. Unfinished business, cross connection ordinance. We still, do we have work to do on that? Or we, I've got to table that again until we get that.
Well, that's where we found that we have one. And then you said that you wanted to add some stuff to it.
I didn't know if we needed to amend it. There were some things that I didn't know and. If they needed to be amended.
Whenever, what was that lady's name, Fred?
Anna Rayo.
The inspector, we spoke to her and she said that. It's not something that we have to do right now. We can make a plan to have it done by the, by year end.
Yeah.
So if we want to do that, so we can, we can just add to or amend the current one that we have.
Yes, because there was some information that I just didn't know, specific information.
Okay.
About things.
So we can look at that maybe in November because I'm going to be kind of busy. Okay, so.
Table it to November?
Yeah, we'll work. Well, yeah, we'll have it done by year end, but we're going to. We'll have to start working on it in November.
Okay, next thing is a severe ad conservation sign. I thought we had closed that out last month.
She was supposed to come back with a. With the sign and then we were going to tell her where she could put it.
Okay. So let's just take that off, to my opinion, until she tells us when she's coming back. You guys agree?
Yep, should we give her permission to put it somewhere?
She was going to get a sign and. Figure out what it was going to look like and then. We were supposed to, somebody with the down was supposed to tell her where she could put it.
Yeah, instead of moving the old one, they were going to put in a new one.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, and then we have an HWC engineering agreement that we approved last month.
Yeah, and I didn't, you guys approved that last month, but I didn't have the actual agreement.
So we need to sign it.
And so we just need to sign that.
Just one?
And that's, yeah, and that's where you guys do the same thing. That's where it's.
So I need to. Date it today, stake?
Yes, please. And I need a motion in second. Well, we already did.
We already did, right?
Yeah, we already did. Yeah, sorry.
It's not like my strategy, so. Okay. All right, and then the alley. For the library that we're going to deed over to them, we're waiting on the. Survey. And then we'll table that till next month. And new business, ADA documents.
Get your pens ready.
Title six needs signed in two places.
Okay. So this is the thing that the lady sent me. I have. I have little things.
Is it just one person?
Yes, I, yes, it needs to be signed. So I have title six needs to be signed in two places. So that's what that is. So I need a motion and second for that. Have we already agreed once? No, this is different.
I'll make the motion when we sign the title six. Agreement.
I'll second.
Okay, all those people say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
And then this. Individual. That had all the pictures in it, that was showing where things need to be done as far as buildings, sidewalks, different things like that, so. You guys have the opportunity.
Yeah, we need some.
To read that. And then we have this coordinator resolution needs signed. And so, and it is. Naming. Me as the coordinator unless one of you would rather.
I think that's fantastic. I make a motion that we sign this resolution.
I was like.
Be the coordinator.
Okay, well, I'm telling you what, you're going. By, by the rules then.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
So with Sandy and Scotty?
Yes. So you guys. And then the last thing that needs to be done is the section five oh four. Needs signed by Sandy. And I'll need a motion and second on that too.
I make a motion we sign section five oh four.
That's the notice of non-discrimination under the Americans with Disabilities Act. I'll second that we sign that.
All those in favor say aye.
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 And the ADA paperwork presented will be available to the public for a two-week comment period.
All right, that's all for that one?
That's all for that.
Okay, then the next is we have a parish consulting quote for laptops for streaming off-site cameras. Or purchase from Amazon.
So.
Charge of the use of that.
Yes, so they called me last week and told me that that computer will not be compliant anymore. And so they gave me this. Quote. And then I also looked at the computers that we bought for Randy and the water department. And so there's those. And they said, if we buy something that's not from them, then it'll be have to be charged. They'll charge us for setting it up, but I'm not quite sure. That's the off-site one to where if anything happened, we still had a computer available to us.
How much is it per hour and how long does it take?
I'm thinking it's like a hundred and eighty and I couldn't see it being more than a hun, an hour. So.
So there's, there's two here, one's seven hundred fifty-nine dollars.
And that's just the difference in the.
Sixty-four gigabytes for thirty-two gigabytes. Agreed. They're both one terabyte. So seven hundred fifty-nine dollars or eleven ninety-five.
And if they spend two hours working on it, I don't think they have.
Yeah.
Hundred and fifty-three hours.
I'm in favor of the parish consulting one just because this is the price and it's not going to cost more. Yeah, I think includes a warranty on it.
I, I second go with parish consulting.
Okay, I make a motion we go with parish one.
I second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're not done yet. So then the one with all the cameras, the computer with all the cameras is no good either. And I don't know anything about those things, so he sent me that. Quote this week. It doesn't say what it is. It's something small because that's the only thing that we use that computer for is those cameras.
It says this estimate represents services and products to be performed or procured by parish consulting on behalf of the customer.
Famous.
Oh, there it is.
Mini PC stick.
Microcomputer desktop. Two hundred sixteen dollars.
And that's, that's what they need to make the, that's the camera monitoring one?
So I just told him that we don't use anything, we don't use that computer for anything but that.
So it's just going to be kind of like a.
It's a, it's just the mini PC to make those cameras work.
I'll motion.
Same motion?
Mini PC.
Want to include that?
For both.
With the same one for both of those?
Yeah.
It would be two, doesn't matter.
Okay, so I was going to get both.
Okay.
Both parish.
So the laptop and the mini PC, we have a motion and a second.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. All right. Department head reports. Town manager, we have a water softener you want to get for this building, Randy?
Yes, would like to.
Okay. Do you have a quote for it?
I have nothing to quote. It's really, they're not size. And no more, there's two to something about just a regular household.
Yeah, so probably what, four or five hundred dollars.
We just purchased one from Menards. How much was that one?
Four hundred and. Four thirty? In between four thirty or four seventy.
Less than five hundred.
Okay, it'll make the plumbing last longer. I make a motion that we buy it.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and then a truck for the street department. Three-year lease.
So yeah, we budgeted money to have it done. We gave us some vehicles to look at. Where we go at incidents where they work with as well. But I got a call or I got a text today. And he said that in order to do that three-year lease. It has to be a twenty twenty-four. So we've been informed to, to lease it needs to be a twenty-four or newer. And unfortunately, the Chevrolet is a twenty-three. And wanted to know if you'd be interested in a single cab twenty-five meter Ram that you looked at. So.
Was the Chevy a single cab too?
No, it's kind of like a cab and a half, third floor backseat.
It's enough. It's a twenty-three. But the twenty-four one is only four thousand more. No.
I got that one down.
How important is that? The extra space in the cab for you got?
It's not just throw your tools in there so, and not have to work out a toolbox on the side.
So this one, this twenty twenty-five looks like it has extended cab though. There's no price.
Randy, you might want to look at it. I don't know. You went up there.
Who said it?
This. New twenty twenty-five Ram fifteen hundred.
Oh, well, he was talking about a twenty-five hundred. So if we're going to get a mini and pull a trailer, we're going to need a bigger truck.
So we don't need this one.
Yeah.
This one's not going to work for what you want.
Yep.
So do you want to keep looking? Because it looks like you don't want any of these.
Yeah, I was, I really want to take it. You already had the bed liner replaced, low mileage. We just can't do it.
You can't do the lease?
Yes.
I called him today and then I had to come here. So he, I haven't heard back from him. So I will try to get ahold of him tomorrow before I leave.
Wonder why they can't.
So we'll, we'll have to look.
Yeah.
I'll have to look and see if there's any. I don't.
Keep working on it.
I don't know if we can make it work or not.
Do you need us to agree to it if you can get it? So you can get it? During the month of October? Okay, I make a motion that if you can get this twenty twenty-three Chevy on the three-month lease, then we go ahead and buy it.
Three-yearly.
Three-year lease, that's right. Three years, sorry.
Three months.
Three months.
Won't do much.
Three-year lease, that's right. Okay. We need a second, y'all.
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, and then. Oh, this other one is, is the same thing, right?
That's for a mini.
A mini.
It's a quote on a mini. That would be for the water sewer and stormwater.
It's an escalator.
And bar cat.
And this was with. What's the guy's name?
Uh, brand new. He's from the boy. I think. Think he's counting up.
Is this brand new?
Yes.
Yes.
You guys know how to drive these things?
They're going to learn. They're going to learn. If we buy it, we're going to.
That's right, but you got to be safe.
So we're down on the back hole. It's not. It's not good. And it's going to cost.
Can we not get those cylinders fixed up?
We're actually working on the front end. We're putting the bearings in there to see if we can't get that spreadened up. Because that's going to be the most expensive fix. If we have to weld it back up, then you're going to have more additional charges. And then the cylinder gets only about a hundred bucks. We can probably do that in-house. So you don't want to have a big charge on the cylinder. The main thing looking at the little mini is you can pull it around town and it's had rotten your back hole on the streets.
No, I, I get it. I'm not advocating that we fix that so we don't get this because we've needed something like this for a while. I just thought it would be nice to have it working.
Yes, and it will be. Chance we can use it just as a loader. It depends on how much it's going to eat to get to where it's not leaking more oil than what.
Right.
But we did find out there is a website out there called Sourcecape. And you can go with every vendor and this is exactly what you're going to pay for that type of equipment. Stacy got a meeting with him next week?
Uh, two weeks.
Two weeks.
October the eighth.
Now we need to compare without making calls and getting papers and it's actually not the right size to put it. If someone's going to try to say you're forty-seven miles, try to say you're fifty, thirty-five point. So here you can specifically quote, this is what I want. And then you get your comparison without having to call three different vendors.
We just learned about this. Last week. Late last week.
So we're still starting early. I mean, it's. We're not ready to pull the plug on the Bobcat or the Cabota we got to hold on. We just won't be able to compare this E D inspection.
Right.
So you're not asking for us to buy this right now?
No.
Okay.
Just kind of letting you know where we're looking. And so far out of the two quotes I haven't received back yet is the highest.
Okay.
Oh, and it's fifty-seven thousand in case you guys didn't.
That's a crazy.
It says.
I said sixty-two.
Maybe I did.
It says fifty-seven there. Sixty-two, sixty-two.
Forty. It's fifty-seven before all the others. Okay, sixty-two thousand. Okay. All right, did you have anything else, Randy?
Um, the family should be finishing up the slip line tomorrow or maybe Friday to take some weather. And then we'll go back to you and do our first list.
Where are they at right now on slip lines?
Uh, right here on the six-inch line. Right from here between here there and the wings.
Okay.
So they're down to two patches, um, fifteen.
Okay, this is fixed up?
Yes.
That's good. Thank you. We're getting that finished.
Well, and plus the railroad inspector says no.
Oh, we still have the road open, no?
Well, the whole state is, I mean, we're past and with the monitor. And he may not like the way the rip rack is if they get your quotes to the rails. He's going to get his final.
And I'm sure so.
He'll have something to say.
All right. Darrell? Darryl, you got a quote for cameras here? Do you guys see these quotes for cameras?
That's for, uh, gas cameras, bottle cameras. They store the videos. I might, I agree with you, it was, we're running around, we see somebody's got an expired plate and that's not right there. If it's stolen, it lives longer than that and I know it works, I've seen it with people that apparently are starting to call it. Yeah. There's a problem here.
Danny?
And I'm, I'm looking at half of it. We, we, I'm going to call in about three seconds.
Okay, awesome, and that's.
And they installed.
On site?
All, yeah.
All great, for this price?
Yeah.
Eighteen thousand?
And the reason, the reason I'm giving you that's not is he, uh, he needs you guys to okay for whoever has to sign that paperwork to do that, because that quote is one fifth till the end of this month.
Do you have the original that they need to sign? These are others.
I, I have one covered, that's what I mean.
And do they care if it's on a copy or? If they're okay that it's on a copy, then I'll just have them sign mine, if they approve it.
So Darryl, we have a question. It says that this is good for sixty months. So at the end of that sixty months, this is the program length, which is going to be how long they store your video, right?
This is the, no, that keeps.
That's the service that makes.
That's the warrant, it's, it's a five-year warrant. It's going to be kind of like the taser, I think, after five years you may want you to replace the taser and put it on you. These units that, that they're, that they're down from here.
Okay, so I think we're just concerned that there would be a service fee, a monthly service fee after that.
That is if.
Okay.
And that is going to.
What they wanted, what they wanted to do was they wanted to make yearly payments like, like the two.
Yeah, yeah. We have that public safety money that we've been getting and you can only spend it on so many things and this is one of them that you can spend it on. And so this won't get paid until the twenty-twenty-six budget, but you have to sign the paperwork.
Okay.
To get the quote.
To get the price.
Okay, I make a motion that we go ahead and purchase these cameras.
So.
Bob, second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so whatever we need to sign.
Do you want us to sign that one? Do they all need to sign it or just her?
I think what, what you meant was we should send us paperwork.
Oh, what do you want to give?
There's no place.
Yeah, there's nothing to sign on there.
Okay, so just let me know and I'll come to town and sign it.
I'll take mine, you can have yours.
Okay, okay. And then water department, we have a estimate for a well. To remove the pumping equipment, jet wash the well, treat with Codex acid descaler jet wash with a second time and replace the pumping equipment for fourteen thousand per well. We only need to do one, this is the Highway forty-one well.
Probably, since they have the equipment on site, no, we're going to do both.
Okay, so twenty-eight thousand, it's the same price or would it be less because they already have their stuff?
They have a BOGO or something.
Why would I get one half off?
That's only one quote, so if you want additional.
Do we need to have two of them?
Both of them at the same time last night.
Okay.
But the problem is same amount of time on a mile of water.
Okay, and we have budgeted funds to do this, Stacy?
It would have to come out of, uh, it'd probably come out of improvement, water improvement money, yeah.
Okay, I make a motion that we do this for both wells on forty-one.
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, Randy, and then you need a, you need a mower and bush hog? Yeah?
That's the point, we're going to do that.
So that is, um, that's for the bush hog and two different mowers, correct?
Yes.
So the first one I think is, let's see, I think that's the bush hog and then this is two different mowers.
I did not reach out to Scotty yet, that, that is the only place I was going to reach out to was Drawl's, which we had purchased our mower for the street department in Cross Scotty's.
Okay.
And so I'd like to go back to Scotty's and see what they have to offer.
Okay. So we'll table this to get another quote.
Yes, and they should be running on special as well.
Okay. Next is a strained street water tank update, is it finished?
There's some pictures off the guy in the middle. Did he ever send you a quote?
No, he's waiting on the inspection crew to show up to see what the inspection shows that needs to be fixed.
They replaced the ladder already though, aren't they?
We already improved that last month, right?
Yeah.
It's costing a lot on me.
They said there's two changeovers to paint the interior of the ladder and, and now they just need to get the inspection crew in there, get them up to the bowl or the tank and see what needs to be fixed.
We do know there is one hole that needs to be fixed, for sure.
When's the last time other than that someone's been inside there on that ladder? You remember, Fred?
Probably when it was painted.
When the hail?
Definitely the hail damage.
In twenty-twelve?
Well, we probably didn't have it inspected, we didn't have it inspected, um, six years ago.
It must have went downhill really fast.
It's, it could, it's, it wasn't long after it had been painted, so whatever, I heard after that and it was literally weather related.
Yeah.
Okay, and then the automation enclosures quote for the water tower controls.
That was last month.
Mm-hmm.
That was the water tower controls and the SCADA.
Yeah, you're going to see if you need a, if you could get another quote, were you able to get one?
There's still one, I talked with precision controls, the, turn them, oh, this is a little, uh, level, uh, monitor compliant, they're still working on it.
Okay, so we're still waiting?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, did you have anything else?
No.
All right. Sewer department, Randy?
No, he's trying to, he just probably forgot the.
All right, so, um, have you seen a big improvement in the mound water that went there with this rain since we had?
It's really hard to stay, just because the conditions of the ground being so dry, it probably soaked up quite a bit. But JD said he can tell difference because normally we get a bit of a rain, just walking down the street, you know, we would send it to the basin and then we didn't see much of anything.
Okay, good, that's good. All right, Stacy? Oh my gosh.
What are you saying, Andy?
Just move on for a session.
I'm going on vacation. I talked to Michael Edwards, who's the attorney for the library, about the boring and they want to know if someone, if he could know who to contact in the town to see exactly where to bore or we want them to bore at, so he can put it in the inter-level agreement. So I don't know, Randy, would that be something that he talks to you about or?
Yeah, actually, engineering's coming down tomorrow for the water. I think we're going to make a kind of a tour of the sewer and this project for the library.
Okay.
So I know they do have some information on the pumps that they add and they're checking to make sure that it will pump at three hundred and eighty feet. So they're running some numbers and we'll have something from our side in case you'd say.
Okay, if you could get that, if you wanted to just email it to me, I can send it to him, like the location and then I'll send him your information so he can maybe follow up with you and make sure in the inter-level agreement that it's correct, so.
Sure.
Okay. That's it. All right, is there anything we missed? Okay, our next meeting will be Wednesday, October twenty-second at six o'clock here. I make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Oh.
Did you have something else?
Yes, when you were painting the tower, the water tower, you had overspray. Got all over my truck, my grandson's truck, my neighbor's car.
Okay, can you, okay.
Which tower was that?
Hold on, what's your name?
Molly Parrish.
Molly?
Molly.
Molly, okay.
I live at fourteen West Street, I go, my grandson lives at three oh seven South Victor.
I'm Matthew Devon, I live at four oh seven South Victor.
I don't know of anybody else around me that has got overspray on their vehicles. But I know I've got mine, his two vehicles and my other grandson's vehicle have overspray on them.
Okay.
Mine's a black truck and his white, I know it.
Okay. First want to say, I apologize, but also this is the first we've heard of it. So are there any other neighbors that had it?
I don't know, I haven't been around to check whether mine has been really selling up to it.
Did any of you make an attempt to take care of it yourself or did it come off or did you just leave it alone?
I, I tried this, uh, this labor last night and I tried this lawyer, it should be forever good.
Okay.
Same with the vehicle that I have, it's, it's black, that's one out of four. The other three vehicles I think were gone enough that it didn't get overspray, but this one sets out and.
Okay. What'd you say your name is?
Matthew Devon.
What's your grandson's name?
And then Justin Gordon, his child.
So that's four vehicles?
Two black, red, gray color.
Okay, so we're, we'll have to get with the paying company, okay, and see, I'm sure that they've probably had this happen in the past, let's see what their process is, okay, and we'll get back with you. So if we can get contact information from all of you before you leave.
Give me, if you can give me phone numbers, because they're going to want to contact you guys. I'm going to go out of town, so I'm going to contact them tomorrow and give them their phone numbers. So if you guys can write your phone numbers on the back of my piece of paper and before I leave, I'll give them all your information and then they're going to contact you personally, okay?
Okay, all right. Thank you. All right, so we have a, a motion and second on the floor to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned at six fifty-eight.
Second to that?
Yeah. Scotty?
Yeah.